Sure, Ms. Wells?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Baxendale?
Yeah.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Present.
Mr. Muschak?
Here.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
Oh, there's Mr. Pachus just back back on. Present and Mr. Shoma?
Here. All right, what I was saying is we only have one item to vote on this evening. So I'm gonna ask JJ to serve as a voting member this evening and Hector and Darius will work that out for next for next week. But again, we're talking one item. And that item is the review in action on applications 04-20 SPR, open door shelter, previous approval under Route 7 and Maple LLC, 24 Berkeley Street, release of bond for construction of five unit four-story townhouse building. Steve, Brian, you want to bring us up to date on that?
Yeah, so for those who've been in the zoning commission, this project was or who are on the zoning commission, this project was approved a few years ago. They have since applied for a zoning permit. They got the zoning permit and submitted their bond. But the owner of the property has sold it. So they are requesting their bond back and the new owner has submitted an updated bond under their LLC.
Can I ask just a brief question? What does this have to do with the open door shelter, which is located in South Norwalk?
As far as I know, they purchased the approval essentially, so they purchased the property. So I think they're acting as the developer for it.
Oh, okay, okay. Do you want to? Excuse me, we want to put up the action item?
Sure.
Anyone have any questions about this? All right, if not, can I have a motion to approve release of the bond?
Motion to approve.
Okay, that's Mr. Baxendale's second?
My second.
Um, I think Mike got his hand up first, Mike Muschak seconded.
Sorry.
Let's do it with a show of hands, all those in favor. And it's unanimous. Okay. Steve, discussion of single family zoning?
Certainly, yes. Brian, were you, did you have a question, Brian, or you just were you on the motion? See, have your hand raised? I didn't want to cut you off.
Oh, I'm sorry. No. Sorry.
No, no problem. So hopefully the memo made some sense. So as part of the zoning rewrite, one of the, you know, the areas that was identified in the pre-analysis of the zoning rewrite and something that, you know, staffs had issue with for a long time is just the number of zones the city has in general. If you spent any time looking at our zoning map, there's just a lot of zones, whether they're residential zones or commercial zones. There's just a lot of them. And so for simplicity reasons alone, it kind of makes sense to consolidate or eliminate zones. You know, if it makes sense, if it doesn't lead to a lot of unforeseen circumstances, you don't want to deal with things about too many non-conformities or variance applications after the fact of whatever action you decide to take in that regard. So that was kind of one of the charges that we gave to the consultant team TPUDC when they started looking at the regulations. Their initial analysis came back with the recommendation to consolidate all the, for the most part, to consolidate the most of the single family zones, which are kind of in order in terms of the size and of the lot would be our AAA, which is like a one acre zone, double A, which kind of corresponds to a half acre zone, A-zone, which corresponds to a quarter of an acre zone, and then the B-zone, which is, I don't know, maybe it's an eighth of an acre. It's about sixty-two hundred square foot for a lot area. So if you take a look at the zoning map and you kind of zoom around, it's really a hodgepodge of, you know, there's really not any rhyme or reason why one area is AAA versus double A. If you, you know, if you were setting up your ideal community, you would start around the center, which would probably have where all your infrastructure is, your mass transit, your job base, all those things. And that would be where things are most intense, and then it would start to lighten out from that point. But the way our, you know, community has developed over time is that there's different spines of activity, whether it's main Ave, the Route 1 corridor. We have stuff going on up at Mary at 7. We have West Ave Wall Street, South Norwalk, we have East Norwalk. So we're this kind of, it's much more of a nodal infrastructure and a nodal development pattern, which is a little trickier to kind of get your hands around and try to, you know, simplify it and make sense of it. But in thinking about what TPUDC did, they said, all right, let's consolidate the AAA, double A, the single A, and then we'll split the B-zone properties. And then we'll make that the new single family zone. So they also, as part of that analysis, said, we're no longer going to regulate lot area as one of the principal metrics of how you define kind of how big of a property is. And their initial recommendation was to solely look at the width of the lot. When we looked at that a little more closely, we felt that that was going to lead to some issues principally based on the lot width that they recommended. So Brian and I and some other staff members have been spending a lot of time over the last couple of weeks, really kind of thinking about that with the goal of trying to consolidate some of these zones for simplicity purposes. And just to make the, you know, the code easier to follow, make it clear for, you know, the layperson who's looking at this about what zone is my property? And so what rules apply to me? That's kind of the driving force behind that. So we've kind of are thinking in our minds, and we'll explain a little bit and show you some maps on what we're thinking. But it might make sense to consolidate the double A and single A zone, leaving the AAA zone alone, because the AAA zone has the largest lot requirements. It's a little more unique. A large percentage of the AAA zone is outside of the municipal water and sewer district. And then we said, okay, we have this B-zone, which is a single family zone, but a pretty small lot zone. And it's got a lot of characteristics of a single family zone, but it's also got very similar characteristics of our C-zone. Basically, the same setbacks, the same lot requirements, but the C-zone allows you to do a two-family house when you have a little larger lot. So we think that trying to be consistent with the goals of the plans of conservation and development, which says, you know, provide a multiple multitude of housing choices and also, you know, simplify the zoning. We think that we can accomplish both by that formula. We're basically, we'll leave AAA zone alone, consolidate the double A and the A, and then the B-zone will kind of split. And we're not quite 100% settled on our initial recommendation where those lines fall. But the B-zone would kind of go either to that single family zone or it would go with our existing C-zone, which allows one and two family. So that way you're providing that kind of housing element that I don't think the city is the one thing from a zoning standpoint that we don't necessarily promote. We do a good job of approving multifamily development, as you can see, pretty much, you know, in South Norwalk and other areas where it's being built. We have a lot of single family land in the city, but we don't have necessarily that kind of middle ground where it might be an entry point for somebody who's looking to, you know, maybe they can buy a two-family house where they're not with the burden of what's going on in the single family market. So it's kind of the rationale from that standpoint. The other part which we're not going to really dive into tonight is the consolidation of the commercial zones, which I think is a little more straightforward and lines up more with what's actually occurring on the ground. So we can that another night. But I wanted to talk about that tonight. And then the other aspect, I think, and I'll just brush back to my memo to make sure I didn't miss anything. The other aspect to talk about would be the density standards and whether we should consider applying them or not. And then Ryan is going to talk about afterward, you know, we can talk about it during the discussion or we can talk about it just separately is talk about the accessory dwelling legislation, which I think we talked about with both commissions when they were still separate, probably sometime in early 2021. So that's kind of an overarching discussion. So if there's initial questions, it might make sense to flag those and then we can look at the maps and see if what we're kind of recommending at least makes sense from a starting point.
Looking forward to that discussion.
Questions for Steve, comments for Steve?
Yes, I have a question. Am I speaking now?
Yes, you are, Richard.
Um, the consolidation of the, I believe you said the A and the double A zone. So what would that result in? One zone of a quarter of an acre or non-conforming quarter acre that should be half acre or how would that work?
Yeah, it's a good question. So the, it would be, the lot requirements for the zone are similar in terms of the lot width requirement. So that's a big thing if we go in the direction of just regulating the lot width. So the end result would be you'd have properties that were a quarter acre that would become non-conforming to that. If we keep the lot area, if we don't have that as a standard, then that, then that issue goes away. There might be, there will be instances where the building on the property, like the house, would become non-conforming to the setback. However, and I already kind of chatted with our law department about this because I, in a previous previous employment, they did something similar a long time ago where they upzoned properties from a two acre zone to a four acre zone. And what they did was they put in a clause that for the properties that worked formerly in the two acre zone that were upzoned to the four acre zone, that if they did work on their house, that the two acre zone setbacks at the time of the rezoning apply. So they weren't penalized for, you know, say I wanted to put a 10-foot addition onto my kitchen. I wouldn't have to go to the ZBA for that so long as I complied with those prior setback rules, if that makes sense. Because I don't want to create, I don't want to end up with-
With somebody that had a half acre lot that was wide, find themselves in a position where they could subdivide into two lots then?
Not necessarily, because the lot width requirement for the double A and the single A is the same. So they're not going to get that benefit from that.
But I'm saying if the half acre area was a wide narrow, a wide shallow lot, for instance, so that they might possibly have the frontage to be able to do two lots.
Okay, yeah, so under that scenario, you're saying that the property doesn't meet, there's no minimum lot size, but there's the lot width component only. And so they're shallow. Yeah, there are probably going to be some scenarios where that's the case. We've been looking and Brian's done more on the analysis end of that piece, just looking at the lots and the standards. We don't think it's going to result in a large increase. Something else that I neglected to mention, which kind of feeds into that question is the, these rules would no longer allow a rear lot. So those are eliminated. So to, for us to go in and really like look at a lot by lot basis would probably take a really long time. But I think that the two will probably be close to bouncing out.
So the rear lot provisions would be eliminated from the zoning code completely?
Right, they have to front on a street at that minimum lot width. Whereas an accessway for a rear lots only has to be 25 feet. So technically, if you had 125-foot wide lot, you might be able to do a rear lot under the new zoning, you wouldn't be able to do that.
Thank you.
That preserves those zones to be remain not be subdivided, right? Is that the essence of that?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part, Nick.
Oh, sorry, is the essence of the rear lot, what you were just saying, so that you can't continue to subdivide like the?
No, not necessarily. I think if the rear lots are allowed in certain zones, provided you have enough area and enough width. This, the, just regulating the lot width would eliminate the rear lots because they wouldn't have twice the frontage they need. Where in a case now, they could do, you know, they could have a larger area, but a smaller width and still get that rear lot.
Okay, thanks.
If someone has a house, a piece of property now with a house on it, where they could have developed a rear lot and the zoning is changed and then they can't develop a rear lot. Is there any taking issue? You know, they, someone bought that property, maybe with the assumption that at some point they could build a rear lot.
I don't believe so. I, that's a question I could double check with the law department on. I don't think so. I think, you know, in general, the, you know, when you're rewriting your regulations, you have pretty broad powers to do those kind of changes. So I don't think that would be the case, but I can confirm that if you'd like, that's no problem.
Well, I, I don't know, it just occurred to me that, you know, people were, would, there will be people who are counting on that, you know, who bought the property thinking, oh, good. In another 10 years, I can sell that rear lot.
Yeah, I mean, if they had a lot on record, so if the lot was already subdivided, then that, that wouldn't go away. They, you know, if they're just sitting on a large piece of property and didn't act on it, then, you know, I don't know. I think you're, at that point, if you've changed the rules, you're within your authority to do so.
Steve, can we even begin to estimate how many properties this change would make non-conforming?
In terms of combining the A and the double A?
The A and the double A, yeah.
Brian, you had that number? I know we looked at that.
I think it would depend based on if you're going with the approach of keeping a minimum lot area or if you're going to go with not using that metric anymore and using lot width instead. In which case it's easy enough for me to pull up the numbers. Say, you know, if we're combining A and double A and we want to choose the half acre lot size, you know, it's easy enough for me to filter out all the ones that don't meet it. If you use the smaller lot size, I wouldn't imagine you're not creating any more non-conformities than exist today.
But is, is it possible to keep both the width requirement as well as the square footage requirement?
Yes, you could, yeah.
Is there any reason not to?
Half the properties would be non-conforming then, or not half, but all of the As would be non-conforming.
Yeah, from that-
Or all of the double As would be non-conforming.
Well, it's not non-conforming if it's too big. It's non-conforming if it's too small.
Right. Right.
I would totally not be in favor of that.
Of what, Richard?
Of rendering every A-lot in Norwalk.
Non-conforming, yeah, I agree with you.
Now, let me just, I should probably know this, but now if a house is non-conforming, it means that the footprint of the house could never be changed without a variance?
It means a lot of things. If there's a fire, for instance, and it costs more than 50% of the value of the building to rebuild, you can't without a, you know, some kind of a variance or something.
I think in this, in this case, you know, the lot size being non-conforming isn't necessarily a huge impact. You'd still be able to construct the house on your lot, you'd still be able to comply with setbacks.
That's for an empty lot, though. If you have a legal lot, that's non-conforming. As long as you can meet the setbacks, then you can build.
Right, so say, so say you, you took these A-lots and you now say, well, you need now half an acre, so you're non-conforming. But we can adjust the setback so that, you know, the existing structure still conforms with setbacks.
Like the example that Steve gave before.
Right, so they, they both have the same front setback as exists today. The only difference is really the side and the rear. So if you were to take that double A zone and give it the same setbacks as the A-zone, then now you're only making the lot size non-conforming, which isn't, doesn't necessarily have a huge impact on what you can do on your lot.
That's true.
So if there are small lots, smaller than the zoning calls for in the area, and they, and they're existing, then those lots and the houses on them all become non-conforming, right?
No, just a lot.
Not that the house might not, no, not necessarily. It did all, it depends, I mean, there will probably be some just based on how that individual structure was built, but not necessarily. So you could, if you have a, if a portion of your house is not conforming, it doesn't mean you can't do any work on your house. So if you build, say you have one set, the side yard setback is 10 feet. On one side, the house was built in 1920, it's only five feet off the property line. But on the other side, it's 30 feet from the other property line. You could still build out on that other side. You might just be restricted on the side that was too close to the existing setback on that one side. And Norwalk does allow vertical expansion as well within non-conformity. Other communities don't allow that, but Norwalk has done, has been allowed.
So which sounds a good formula to me as having heard the conversation. Doesn't have many downsides and has some upsides.
I think for simplicity reasons, there's upsides and, you know, Brian and I are still kind of tinkering and double checking numbers. And, you know, like I said, I think our primary goal is not to end up with a lot of unforeseen circumstances and, you know, we don't want a ration variance applications and, you know, that's the last thing that we're trying to see. Oh, you're muted, Luke, sorry.
And so if I'm understanding this right, Steve, can I just say it back to make sure I'm processing this right? So effectively, the real changes are more in the what you do with the the B, C area, because that's where you're going to be able to get two-family homes more by right than you have today. Is that right?
Right, so the, the B right now is a single family zone with a lot area of 6,250 feet. And the width on the street requirement is 50. The C-zone is a lot area of 5,000 square feet. Same lot width, but if you have a lot area of 6,000 square feet, you can do a two-family, which is a little kind of quirky why that discrepancy between the two. And if you look at the zoning map and we can pull it up and go through these, if you want to take a closer look as well, there are a lot of areas that are, you know, it's one side of the street is B, one side of the street is C. And then there's certain areas that just don't seem to line up or there isn't a good reason why one is versus the other. So Brian and I were talking about, you know, one concern we think could pop up is if you're in the B-zone and you have, and there's a lot of lots in the B-zone, which are in that 5,000 to 5,500 square foot area and they're in the lot width is just about 50 feet, based on this mapping that we can do online. On those instances, you know, the fear would be, well, you're going to add another unit, it's going to make it a two-family. Well, just because the regulations allow it, there's other standards that apply too. So you have to provide four parking spaces for a two-family house. So those parking spaces have requirements on where those can go. So somebody has to account for those spaces too. It's not just as simple as somebody slapping up a building and he still has to meet all the, all the requirements as well.
Absolutely, but in essence, the motivations there is to try to help generate homes in that missing middle of the housing market that we don't really have today or lacking.
That would be-
Giving the opportunity at least.
Yeah, that would be the impetus on those B-zone ones.
So we're trying to encourage two-family houses.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you could, you know, the missing middle is a two to four unit. And I mean, a lot of people have expressed interest in that kind of housing and some different efforts we've had. I think the two-family concept goes in that direction without, you know, opening up Pandora's box.
And A, the delta, the combination of the A and, oh, sorry, double A and triple A, no, I'm getting that wrong. A and double A, A and double A. Not like, what's the? I'm not seeing a big deal with that, but I just want to make sure I'm not missing anything. Like it seemed very similar, other than the sizes are slightly different right now. Is that roughly right?
Correct, yeah, it's just the, the only difference now is the side setbacks. I think the rear might be a little different, but the side setbacks and the minimum lot area, which it's twice the A, double A is twice A.
So what's a bad scenario that can come from that?
Well, it depends on what your definition of bad is. On some, you know, I think, given the temperature, from what I would expect, I would think if, if the, you know, the in those like double A, A-zone, if it led to a lot of new development, people would probably not be happy with that. Just my guess. Now, the other side would say we need to provide more housing. I'm not advocating one for the other, because I think if we take a balanced approach and target it in specific areas, which I think is what we're shooting for, I think that's the correct path.
But is the combination necessarily going to generate all this new new build? What would be, I'm trying to figure out, what do you now, what can you now do that you couldn't do before?
The, I think if you combine the, if you leave AAA alone with basically the same metrics that it has, I don't think anything changes there. Double A and A, considering that the existing lot width requirements are the same, you're not adding, shouldn't be adding anything there. Technically, somebody could probably argue the opposite way that you're you know, restricting the single A a little bit more in terms of potential, but I don't think so. The area where you're potentially adding units would be in that, you know, the B-zone areas that are proposed to go from B to the, to the C-zone.
Nick, I don't think the purpose of combining A and double A is to encourage additional development. Because the amount of additional development that can take place there is really going to be quite limited.
Right.
You know, there may, there may be a couple of instances. Well, I'm in double A, I have a house behind me that's in double A that's on a full acre of land. There could be some additional development there, but that's really very unusual. I think the purpose is to reduce the number of residential zones that we have in the city.
That makes a lot of sense. And then the real change comes with the, what you do with the Vs.
Right. And I think even there, the, the amount of additional housing that can be developed is still going to be relatively modest. I mean, the, the real growth in housing that's going to take place is, is going to take place in the areas of the city that are designated for dense housing. And what, what this change will do, it seems to me, is perhaps open up some additional units for, for, you know, that, that missing area of, of housing.
One thing Brian and I were just kicking around also was if there was large concerns in the B areas about, you know, changing the character and, you know, how this affects the existing. You could, so right now, as I mentioned, in the C-zone, the C-zone's a one and two-family zone. And in order to go from a one to two, you need an extra thousand square foot of lot area. So if that was a big concern, you could also just apply that same standard across the B-C where if you, and you could do a one-family as of right, but if you wanted to do two, you would need something additional on that lot. Whether it's, if you stick to just a lot width, you could bump that up a little bit. Or if it was, you wanted to also apply the lot area metric, you would just jump that up from five to six.
Did you toy at all with going beyond two?
Not in those zones because, no, we didn't, just for the fact that we- Not in those zones because, no, we didn't, just for the fact that we. The, the existing C zones don't, we, we, we looked at whether some of the C zone should go into the next. Category up, which is our current D zone. That's, that's, there's a new category in, in the new zoning for that, but. We looked at some of those areas to make sense to go that direction with those. But the, the, it seems like from what we can tell. And I think one of the maps that. Brian and I sent out had the. Had mapped the C zone properties and the two family houses within the C zone. And I think it shows that all, the, a big chunk of those properties. Were comprised of two family dwellings already.
And Steve, is the, is under the, these plan changes, is the parking? Basically going to stay two, you, two parking spaces per unit?
For the one in the two, yes. We've been talking about some changes around like, in like the TOD areas, dropping it some, but the, for like the single family, two family. That standard applies. And I would think if you're in a multi-family and you're not like. In an area can conducive to transit, then you're probably going to be. What, with what our current standard is, but we're, you know, some of those numbers can tweak throughout this process.
I, I will admit that I harped on it a little bit, but that. The parking on that. That development where they were adding some units on to an existing one. I can't think of the name. It was on one of the streets near the hospital.
Elmcrest.
Elmcrest and. And you know, the parking was just horrendous there. And I just felt like I, I, I'm in agreement that. You don't need as much parking in the. You know, the Chestnut Street development and, and you know, some of those. Down in South Norwalk with the train station right there, but. Those, those streets that are fully developed already, that I don't, I don't just see, I can't see where they can take that. What is it? One and a half cars or something? One car?
1.3.
1.3. Anyway, that's just my opinion. It was just really hard to drive around down there. And, and I just thought to myself with that. Units they were adding, there was going to be at least 12 more cars in front of that. That area. So anyway.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
I'm, part of me is thinking, the discussion is very good, actually. It, it's. We're diving deeper into this than we ever have before, I think. And part of all of this discussion has to be the ADU. Part of this as well, because. That's going to add potential. Affordable housing. And options. And I want to thank Diane Larsella for forwarding her, or sending an email. That was forwarded to the commission. Today, earlier today. Highlighting that, but. Part of me thinks if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And the A and double A, I'm trying to figure out what's broke. And if it's. If it's. Described here accurately. It's to simplify the code, reduce. The number of residential zones to make it easier for. Homeowners and staff. And honestly, I don't have a problem figuring out much about it now. Does it add? A lot of workload? To have the two separate, like. B and C is a really good discussion to have. And I'd like to dive, dive deeper into. The front yard setback parking requirement, because I think that. Limits. A lot of people in putting in a second unit. Because they can't fit the four spaces. Required, and I, I know this personally. Because I had to spend a lot of money to. Dig out and literally blast rock out of a backyard. When I could have easily put. Two parking spots in the front yard setback. Of a, of a house that I, of an abandoned house across the street from where I live. In a C zone and I made a single family, a two fam. So I actually. I did my own version of providing affordable housing. And I still own that house and I rented out to friends who appreciate the, the break. And, and you know, anyway. I, it, it was, it put a real. Limitation. I had the resources to do it, but it was. Tens of thousands of dollars to put the two parking spots behind the house, behind the front yard setback. And other towns actually are not as strict. So that part of the discussion I want to have, but going back to the A and double A. If it ain't broke, don't, why fix it? I mean, I, I'm feeling as though we could. Apply. This discussion to the B and C. And D zones and, and A zone, but or. Not the A and double A, not sure. What that's, I mean, Nick, you were kind of. Touching on that, what is it that it's, this is going to result in? Is it, is it really? That burdensome to have that, the extra language in our code now? So I guess that's directed at staff.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I would say burdensome. I just think i- if, you know, we're going through the process of, you know, that. This is a complete overhaul. It's not just tweaks to a couple of different zones. I- if we're. Taking the comprehensive look and. Trying to come up with as, as many ways as possible to streamline the code, make it as. Clear and simple to follow as possible. I, I think that that definitely makes sense. I mean. It, 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 it might make more sense looking at it from the zoning map perspective when you have. You know, a, a patch of double A verse next to a patch of A, next to a triple A, and then there's really. Not a big rhyme or reason of why these lots developed with the way they developed. You know, like I, like I kind of touched on, if you were designing the community from strat, scratch, you would, you know, start off. At your center, very dense, and then fan out as you got away from that activity center. So I think. We're, we're definitely not at that model. So now we're at the stage of. How do we make this as simplified and as clear as possible? I think. Combining those. When there's no kind of downside to it, at least from what I can tell and then from the analysis that we've done, just would make the, the, the code just easier for everybody.
So, so quick question and forgive me if you've already given this answer. But by combining the two zones, will that? Expand or enable? A developer to, to build a multifamily dwelling? That is. I guess doesn't have the traditional setback. From the street.
No, not, not in the double A and A that in the B and C, if you combine portions of the B to the C zone. That would loosen up the ability to build a two family in some areas where you couldn't today.
Well, I, I don't mean two family. I mean multiple dwelling, like apartments, like, you know, 10 units.
Not, no, none of these changes that are, we're kind of kicking around right now would be affected by that.
Um, can, can you redefine that? When you said won't be affected by that, will it, will it allow that?
No, no. So the, the changes tonight that kind of more or less we're talking about are really more to the. Solely on the one family and then on just the two family zone. So.
Okay. So we're concentrating on that. Okay. Thank you very much, Steve.
Sure.
And will we end up? Discussing the parking in the front yard setback issue? As part of the zoning revision? At some point?
That's something that needs to get rectified because I agree with you. It's. It is the large, one of the largest wastes of my staff's time is regulating that is just a. Complete pain in the neck.
Oh, and there has been heartache upon heartache in this town. From that driveway regulation because. You know, circular drives are not allowed in Norwalk. It's the stupidest thing. I have ever seen and it is, I remember Fran. Our former chair of the planning commission, Fran DiMeglio. She, once she heard that. She reminded me of it all the time. Why don't we allow that here? And. And, and I'm only going to touch on this for a second because it's not really on the agenda to discuss the parking, although you did say parking.
Yeah.
So I assume that that was, it would be included. But maybe not specifically the front yard setback issue, but. You cannot, y- you have to back out onto busy streets in Norwalk because the regulations force you to. You can't. Turn your back end into a little key in your front yard so that you could then face straight out. And, and see who's coming, pedestrians, bicycles. Pedestrians on sidewalks, bicycles in the street and cars coming either way. Literally on busy streets, the city says you can't put. A turnout so that you can turn your car around. You have to back out onto a busy street. Or you'd be in violation of the zoning code. That really bothers me because that's a public safety issue as much as anything. And. And I can't tell you how many times like in Rowayton or Harborview or, you know, these denser neighborhoods. Where I've been asked as a landscape architect to design a courtyard. Because folks moving from other places, the California. New York State and Massachusetts and you name it. Where they had a little parking area in the front of their front door. And I say to them, I'm sorry, we can't do that in Norwalk and they cannot understand it. And I can't explain it to them. So the idea of having an entry court. Is very safe. I do think that if we get to that point of the, the discussion. That that should all be pervious paving. Any expansion and it should be limited to a percentage of the front yard. That would limit the impacts and it would always be. Subject to approval by planning and zoning staff and DPW so that there would be levels of. We don't want people to pave over their front yards, basically. And I think everybody would agree to agree with that, but. The, the idea of revising that means that we are suddenly opening up a lot of properties. To having a second unit. Because currently, right now, they can't have it because they can't feasibly put the parking behind the front yard setback. So that's a very simple rule change that to me would go. Nearly as far as ADUs in terms of turning the Bs, the, the C zone, the two family zone. Into a, a more practical. Use of a two family zone. So I'll just, I'll leave it at that. I don't want to take too much of the time on that, but. That's an important part of this conversation. But I, and the A double A thing, I'm quite frankly, I'd be happy to not touch it. I don't see, I, I would be looking, I'm looking down the road at more important things, ADUs and. And other things and not, you know, there is sensitivity in the community, obviously to. Zone changes. Right now, and I'm like, if this is something that we don't have to do. I would prefer not to do it, but certainly zero in on the, the changes that would have bigger impacts.
Um, the, one thing I, I did put in my memo that relates to that is. TPUDC had recommended looking at impervious surface coverage versus just the building coverage. So I think the impervious surface coverage addresses that. That driveway issue. And I, I agree with you on the. You know, simply regulating the amount of the front yard that can be. Dedicated to parking seems to me a much simpler and easier. Solution to deal with that issue, you know, requiring, they could, yeah, like you said, a parking court in a backup area. I don't see why that. Should be prohibited. I, I, I don't understand it either. So.
Yeah, or a circular drive for that matter, you know, in the bigger, in the, in the wider zones, I mean, the bigger. The, the double As and the triple As. There are, there are examples, sorry, but I'll just tell you how silly this is. Examples of circular drives where the, the town, the city, excuse me, of Norwalk. Has told. The, the folks to have to, they have to put a pot. In the middle of the driveway or a rock. And you see this. And that is just shows you how. Absurd this is, this situation is anyway.
But Steve, is. That issue going to be addressed in this rewrite?
Yeah. So the consultant had proposed. You know, I know Mike had sent some language we can, we can go over, you know, if we want to go into it tonight, we can go over another time too. I had had some language before and I looked back and it didn't quite address it. TPUDC had a recommendation which I. You know, their recommendation was basically they can only park in the side or the rear of the property, which I don't think is. Really, you know. I think A, that leads to a ton of non-conformities and B, I don't think everybody's going to want to go in that direction. So I think there's. I, I, I think along the lines of what Mike was indicating are some. Pretty simple solutions to this. Shouldn't be that complicated.
No, and don't forget the public safety aspect of getting someone pointed out. Into this, you know, facing the street instead of backing out blindly. Into traffic and across sidewalks. I mean, it's just, I hunk. But we have a lot of dog walkers in my neighborhood and I. Honestly, I've come close to hitting somebody because I'm backing out of my driveway. I don't see them and they're walking, they're not paying attention because they're on their phone. While they're walking the dog and suddenly they're right behind me. So it happens. And I think we all can point to examples of that. So anyway.
Is, is this all discussion all tied up at all with the regulation? That I don't understand that people can't park their truck in the driveway?
No, that's the commercial vehicle. One is a different one. If they, if they're over a one-time capacity, you can't park it on residential property.
Well, Steve, on, on, on the first issue, can you come back to us with suggested language? That we can discuss?
For, for the parking?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can.
We've just been talking about.
Yeah, we can throw that back on your next agenda. It's be a little busier agenda, but we can. Continue. They don't have to make any decisions tonight. I know there's a. Lot to think about and all the ramifications or possibilities. So we can. Continue this next week and then, you know, I'd like to get some. Kind of direction to the. Consultant so they can kind of. Make edits to the draft and then you guys can take a peek at it and we can start the big discussion.
And. The. I'll just add my, another comment to the B and C zone. So a big chunk of Rowayton is B. And I don't think they're going to be building affordable housing with all due respect. You know, it's an expensive area. So this could lead to the building of a lot of luxury housing. And. You know, Rowayton is. Very dense already, certain neighborhoods of it, not, not all of it, but certain, certain neighborhoods are. Suffering from, you know, sort of over scale building, et cetera. I, I think that's an issue we're all aware of. And so I would be. The, I, the goal of building missing metal housing. Is noble and I support it. But I would look at this, where the zones are in the city. And, and make sure the impacts. Of a lot of turning a B into a Z, a C. Is not going to be. Overwhelming to the character of the, of the neighborhood as much as I support. The building of more housing. And again, that feeds into the ADU. Discussion because we're, we are, you know, going to be allowing. Accessory dwelling units. And in essence, expanding housing opportunities. Without necessarily having to change the zones.
Right. Yeah, we, yeah, the Roway, Brian and I spent a lot of time talking about some of these, some of the areas that are B are. Yeah, we understand it's going to be very difficult to try to. Move them in the direction of a two family. So we won't. I, I, yeah, we're not going to propose something that's going to automatically just. Start a firestorm. And then the other part of it, which, and Brian's got a presentation, you can walk it through again with the ADUs and we can. Kind of continue the conversation after he, he does that, if that makes sense.
Well, why don't we, why don't we move down to Public Act 21 dash 29? And. Start that conversation.
Let me share my screen. It's been a while since I. Gave this presentation, so I might be a little rusty. Let's see.
Let, let me just add one thing while you're pulling that up. Is that I mentioned Rowayton because where the B zone is, it's not. Exactly near a train station. There is a Rowayton train station, obviously, but it's, it's a hike. Up Rowayton Avenue and. The other B zones. Are closer to transit, right? So I live in a C zone. Near the South Norwalk train station and we're two family and we're surrounded by D zone, multi-family. And we don't have these, any issues that I see in our neighborhood. That people fear of density, like we don't have, we don't have gridlock. We don't have crime or whatever these people, whatever people get. Crazy about. We don't have traffic jams and we have lots of dense housing around us. But we're also, a lot of people do walk to the train and they walk down into South Norwalk, we're on, on the hill. But we're, you know, people walk a lot in our neighborhood. So less walkable areas. Might be. Uh it might be B, but they wouldn't be as close to a train station. I want to make that point clear, that's all. Okay, go ahead, Brian. You, I'm done.
All right, so um some of you might know last year uh the state legislator pa- legislature passed uh Public Act twenty-one twenty-nine, which um has some language about accessory apartments and municipalities and then some, some parking regulations as well. Um so the act um essentially revises the the zoning uh enabling statute. Um and touches on uh what an accessory apartment is and what you can and can't regulate for for them. So uh they define the accessory apartment as the separate dwelling unit that's located on the same lot as a principal dwelling unit. Um it has cooking facilities and complies with or complies with or is otherwise exempt from applicable building, fire and health and safety regulation. Um so let's go into what our regulations shall do per the language. Um so the statute says that you can designate where you want your accessory apartments to be, which we already do today. Um they allow for accessory apartments to be attached within the house. Uh they set a max net floor area of thirty percent or one thousand square feet, whichever is less um of the of the single family house. Um and then require you to keep the same setbacks, lot size, building frontage, the same as what um you require for a single family house. So you can't say you need additional lot area or you need additional frontage or anything like that. Um they provide or want you to provide for the same height landscaping and architectural designs and that applies for a single family house. You know, if we allow a thirty-five foot high house, you can tech, you technically have to allow a thirty-five foot high accessory apartment. Uh we don't have design standards for single family homes, so um we cannot have design standards just solely for accessory apartments. Um and then there's some prohibitions. Um so you can't require a passageway from the apartment to the single family house. Exterior doors, that's all kind of under the the building, building code. Um you can't require more than one parking space. Uh you can't require a familial familial marital or employment relationship between the accessory apartment renter and the single family house owner. Uh there's no minimum age requirement. Uh you can't require separately built utilities and you can't require periodic renewals. So this hopefully breaks down where we sit with the language. Um we comply with a good amount of it and then there's some portions where if we wanted to um adopt the language where we would need to to make some revisions. So we already designate zones where the accessory apartments are allowed. Um we allow them to be attached to or within the house. Um we have the same setback requirements and building frontage for the single family houses, the accessory apartment. We don't require you to have more than one parking space. Uh we don't require any sort of relationship between you and the single family homeowner. Uh we don't require you to have separately built utilities and we allow accessory apartments as of right and we actually go a step further than what the language proposed. Um the language actually said that um if if you're gonna allow them or if you're gonna adopt their language, that it would be site plan review um approval required. So we we um actually take it one step further and say it's over the counter um, you know, administrative approval. Where we would need revisions, if we're gonna go ahead and adopt their language, um we would have to allow detached accessory apartments. Um and again, the the height would have to be the same as what we allow for a single family home. Um we, we set a max floor area of accessory apartment at seven hundred square feet, so that's the biggest that you can have an accessory apartment. In the case of the the new statute, technically, we'd be out of compliance. We have to allow up to a thousand or thirty percent of the house. Um one little weird thing that we had that Steve was talking about earlier with with B zone lots um is that if you had, if you want to do an accessory apartment in the B zone, you need to have one and a quarter times size, the minimum lot size. So instead of a six thousand two hundred and fifty square foot lot, you need to have seven thousand eight hundred twelve and a half square feet. Um so we would have to get rid of that additional lot area and just say if you have the six thousand two hundred and fifty, you're good to go. And then um we do technically require periodic renewals. We require if you have an accessory apartment that you need to give us an affidavit each year saying that you reside on the property. Um so that's something that we would have to get rid of.
Brian, I just have one question. You said only certain areas currently in Norwalk, certain zones allow accessory apartments? What are those zones?
So the zones are all the single family zones, so triple A, double A, A and B, you can all have access.
Okay, okay, good. That's what I thought and I, you know, I thought I heard something different. Good. Thank you.
No problem. Um here's the map uh where they're allowed now. So most of the city obviously is zoned as single family, so um they're allowed in all your single family zones. Um currently, we have two hundred and fifty-nine on the books, accessory apartments. Um I don't know how many uh exist that we don't know about. So um our next steps, um so you as the Planning and Zoning Commission um are gonna look at uh do we want to opt into this language? Do we want to opt out of this language? If we want to opt out, do we want to make tweaks to our existing language? Um if, you know, some of the things that we think is, we think, you know, detached accessory apartments are, are, you know, a good idea, um we're not so sure allowing them to be thirty-five feet high is is a good idea. So maybe if, you know, if you're considering, yeah, we want them detached, but we want to make them shorter. Then we'd have to opt out. So essentially, it's you either opt into the entire thing or if you don't like one thing, then then you need to opt out and adopt your own language. Um so some reasons to to opt out would be if you think there's any problems with any of the language um or it's gonna cause any issues. Obviously, we should, we should opt out. Um opting out keeps the power within the municipality. We're not, you know. One of the things with the language is, is if you opt into it, um and you don't make any tweaks, you are pretty much that's your accessory apartment regulation. Um you can't go back and make any more restrictions than than what they permit you to allow. So um you know, we, if you love their language, it still might make sense to opt out and then take their language and adopt it as our own so that we can make tweaks to it later if we have to. Um and then reasons to opt in is, like I just said, if if you don't see any issues with this going forward. Um and then parking changes, I think, is a little bit more straightforward. Um so the new language also said that for zoning regulations, you can't require more than one parking space for a studio apartment or a one bedroom dwelling unit. More than two parking spaces for a two bedroom or three bedroom, any more than that. Um our current standard right now is the one point three. Um so we technically uh don't meet the standard because if you're uh, you know, building a a apartment building that only has one bedroom units, um we're requiring you to to put more than one space uh in per unit.
Brian, is there any regulation, this is Tammy, sorry, that says um how many bedrooms can be in seven hundred square feet if that's our maximum size?
Um not on the zoning regulations, if it might be a building department uh standard for what a minimum dwelling unit might be.
Well, I think that would be important for us to know, because if we are saying, if I heard you correctly, that any of these accessory units can only be seven hundred square feet.
Right, so that's our, that's our current standard. So so this language, the parking language would not, this is like a change of gear, so this isn't gonna apply to accessory apartments. This parking language is applying to multifamily developments.
Oh, I see, not the granny's thoughts. Okay, thank you.
So what applies to the uh accessory apartments for?
So their standard and ours today, so we're consistent with them, is if you're putting an accessory apartment in, you need to provide one parking space.
I see. Okay, good.
Um so I did some real world examples of kind of developments that we've seen come in and how we would compare with um you know, our our current standard of parking versus uh Public Act twenty-one twenty-nines. Um and you kind of get a mixed bag. It really depends on if the developer is building more one bedrooms or two bedrooms. If they're building more two bedrooms, they like our parking standard. If they're building more one bedrooms, they like the state's parking standard. Um we do have um language in our regs where, which I I think is pretty important, where if you pay a um affordable housing fee drop your parking down to the one parking space per unit standard regardless of bedrooms. So um one of our concerns is if you, if you go ahead and you say you only need to buy one parking space per unit, then um that might impact how much money we we can get for our affordable housing fee.
We also allow discount, sorry to interrupt uh Brian, but a discount for um a multi-use, correct? If if we have commercial sharing.
Yeah, we have a shared parking, yeah.
And and that's a discount that I don't know what that is off the top of my head, but you know, we do uh 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 incentivize uh people to do multi-use in that way, in that way, I think, because parking is so expensive to build.
Right, yeah, the the one point three factors in the mixed use.
Thanks.
All right, so your next steps on this are essentially, again, deciding whether we want to opt in or opt out. Um I think I skipped over what the opt-out requirements are for accessory apartments. I could go over that if I missed it. Um this one does not have a deadline for opting out. Um so you, you know, you can kind of take your time on deciding um. Let's see if I did. I did include it, that's good. Um so um for the accessory apartments, which is the 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 one that you know, we should prioritize, I think, is um the language becomes, uh it was effective on January first, twenty twenty-two, but our existing standard is what's in effect until we decide to opt in or opt out of, which we need to do by January first uh twenty twenty-three. If you want to opt out, um you as the Planning and Zoning Commission would hold a public hearing. Um and with a two-thirds vote, you would opt out. And then it would go to the common council to um also conduct a public hearing and then hold a vote on if they also agree that we should opt out. Um
But as you said, uh Brian, we can opt out but adopt their language.
Right, so we think it's a good idea. If if that's the direction that we're going, that we have language ready to go um to say, you know, yeah, yeah, we're opting out, but you know, we like a lot of what is proposed and we're not opting out for um you know, any, I don't think any bad reasons. It's just like concerns over the height, the height of a structure or, you know, any other things that you might have.
Adopted exactly their language, it would leave us the flexibility to see how it works.
Right, right.
You know, and if something isn't working, then we can come back and revisit it.
I I think the the first question you guys have to decide upon is the um do you like, I I think most of this is a change, like, you know, going from a seven hundred square foot to a thousand square foot ADU is not really a big deal, doesn't really change anything. I think the big question is, what is your comfort level with um a detached ADU in the single family zones? If you get past that hurdle, then you could discuss the height, which I think would be the other factor. So if you, you know, th- those are the two questions I think you really need to to ponder.
I I I I I agree with you, Steve, but um I don't see any downside to us opting out to both of these. Um and I only see an upside in that we have flexibility uh to uh change it should we choose to.
I I agree.
Yeah, so making, having made that decision, then I'd move on to the, to the two issues you bring up.
Yeah, I I I think to Brian's point, I would, if you're gonna go the opt-out route, which I think just from another point of view, I would opt out because it just lets you can say, say three years from now, something's not working. If you don't opt out, you don't get to another bite at the apple. So that's why I think it's important to opt out, but to Brian's point, I would opt out, but at the same time, have your proposal ready. Here's what we're opting, we're opting out, but here's what we're proposing, which we think lines up pretty well with what you're recommending anyway, or doesn't. How, and here's our reasons why.
Yes, the language would be in a resolution to approve and opt out, we would just have language in there that would specifically state uh how we feel about uh most of the regular, most of the state recommendations uh because it's a, it becomes a messaging issue as much as anything else. We're not opting out because we disapprove of the intent. It's we're opting out uh really to maintain flexibility in the future. Uh which I think is a no, is a noble goal. And that that language would be right in our approval, uh right?
Right, yeah, we'd have that language ready to go.
I'd go with an opt-out and also lay out our proposals as you're suggesting, Brian and Steve. With also the two issues basically still outstanding where we know we'd make a change, height and parking. Plus, and I don't know whether it's in there, I didn't quite understand this. There's many detached properties here which also have, um let's say, a pool house or a stable or an old stable or garage set down the back of the yard. Which could be changed into an ADU as well. I don't know if that's included or excluded.
Right, so if if um under allowing detached, you'd be able to convert those, you'd be able to throw a kitchen in there and use that as an accessory apartment. Assuming it complies with your square footage.
Okay, but not a thirty-five feet height, I understand. Good.
Yeah. And then, yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Uh well, I'm, the height thing that you and Steve Clapton brought up, yes, I I agree. A thousand square feet is a pretty much a no-brainer. Seven hundred square feet is really uh, you know, I'm just thinking of one of these little small houses uh. I, do people really live in those teeny little things? I mean, the the things that are three hundred square feet? I know they're a trend and a fad, but I I do think a thousand, I mean, people can build one if they want, but the thousand foot uh would that be, that would be a minimum thousand feet, is that correct? That would be a established.
Max.
Maximum, maximum.
But be, be.
House at nine hundred square feet is a fairly decent sized house.
Yeah, they're not that small.
Before we go any, any further with this, Steve uh um are you looking for um us to uh determine the language tonight? If not, maybe we don't need to go any further this evening.
Um no, what I would, I mean what I would, we don't have to, you know, we're not taking any votes on this and we can add this to the the next agenda. I think if we could, you know, it's, it sounds like the consensus is to opt out. I'm just correct me if I'm wrong, opt out, but then the big question, I think, of the two questions that I raised, do I would get a sense of the commission, what they think about detached units in general. And then whether it's seven hundred square feet, nine hundred square feet, twenty-five feet tall or thirty feet tall is a pretty easy discussion to have after the fact, if you can get past that first hurdle. I I think that's what we could use. Those first two questions would be good to get answered.
Does anybody object to a a detached ADU?
Before we get to that, Galen, just by a show of hands. Um how many people agree that we uh ought to opt out of of both of these? All right, so everybody's got their hands up. So um th- that's fine. We'll have, at some point, we'll have to take a formal vote, but in informally, we're all in agreement, we should opt out. Now, Galen, we can, we can talk about some of the specifics.
Well, I was just saying, I don't see any reason why we would want to allow detached uh ADUs. You know, is Brian brought up, there are lots of places with garages that are detached from the house and you could have an apartment above a garage, you could build a separate unit. You know, I don't see a problem with that. And so I I don't understand why that would be a an issue.
Discussion on this?
Well, it makes housing a lot more affordable, obviously, for the, uh someone renting as well as allows someone to have an income, uh uh especially someone who is retiring. And uh they, it can allow them to stay in the house. Uh you know, we don't, fortunately, we don't have like a homestead tax rebate here like they do in some states. But you know, where if you are, have been in your house for twenty years, you get a a nice tax break uh. But uh maybe we're heading that way at some point, but but anyway, this allows people to stay. Uh, but uh, maybe we're heading that way at some point, but, but anyway, this allows people to stay in their houses as housing and costs go. You know, get more expensive, energy costs, et cetera.
Exactly.
It, it's, it's a, it's a, for me, it's a no-brainer, I mean, this is, this is just the direction that we need to go. I'm, I'm, I'm sure of it, the way the demographics are changing, uh, the baby boomers are aging out. They, I have so many clients that has a landscape architect. Who are buying second houses nearby for their elderly parents or whatever to move here so they could be nearby. Uh, uh, or the other way around, they're buying, parents are buying houses for their kids. You know, who are adults and living somewhere else, but now that, anyway, that, the, the situations that people are going through. The hoops people are jumping through in order to maintain proximity. Uh, i- is, i- it's extraordinary to know or to witness what people do to achieve that. And this, this is a vehicle that allows that so easily, uh, and uh. So anyway, I, I, you know, obviously, we're gonna hear the, the public in the public hearing. And, and that'll be uh, uh, obviously extremely valuable to hear the pros and cons. But personally, uh, I don't see uh, an issue with this at all.
We've, we've got. Off the topic, Galen had brought up the issue of whether um, these can be separate. Units as opposed to integral to the existing building, so uh, is there anyone else who wants to comment on that issue?
Lou, I would like to, um, if I may.
Go ahead.
Thank you, a question for Brian or Steve, I guess. Regardless of whether the pod was attached or detached. Does lot coverage come into play? Because if you have a lot of these going up in the B-zone, where you're tenth of an acre and the house might already be at thirty-five percent lot coverage. Is somebody going to be allowed to build to exceed that lot coverage?
Um, we, yeah.
Yeah, no, a definite maybe?
No, it would be no, you wouldn't be able to exceed your coverage.
Okay, I think that's important to note.
Yeah, so you'd have to do it within uh, the, the, the existing uh, uh, house.
Right, well.
It's not to say you can't do it, but you have to do it within the existing house.
Yes, that would just be carving up your own house.
Right, right, you're making the apartment in your house instead of making the apartment in a, a, a separate building. And the second building does not necessarily have to be a tiny little pod, you know, there are all kinds of configurations that. Uh, that work well, you know, an apartment over a garage, an apartment in a, what used to be a stable. A, a self-standing little house that is a day, one of those quote-unquote tiny houses, which I think are. Kind of unworkable, really.
But that's, what I don't want to see um, are people um, dragging, if you will. Um, portable houses uh, uh, onto their properties and, and uh, basically. Uh, having, having it look uh, like a trailer camp. Um, I, I don't support those kinds of pods. Um, I have no problem, um, except, except for that. And as far as seven hundred square feet goes, um, an awful lot of these one-bedroom units, uh, luxury units that are being sold in Norwalk. Are not, maybe seven hundred feet or less.
Yeah, exactly.
This city was four hundred and fifty square feet, and I can tell you, I was paying a lot more than what's.
A thousand square feet is, is a decent-sized house, that could be a two-bedroom, living room, kitchen, one bath, maybe a half-bath. A thousand square feet is substantial-sized house. I can send you guys um, photographs, if it's helpful, of different ranch-style houses in different sizes from seven hundred to twelve hundred square feet. Or I can stop at a thousand, but anyways, if you'd like to see for comparison, I'm happy to share that with the group if that's helpful.
Tammy, why don't you send them, and, and send them to Steve and have Steve forward them?
Okay, will do.
And then Brian and I don't have to do that, that's.
Right, I'm sorry, Richard, did you start to say something?
Yeah, I, I just was a, a little bit concerned about, um, I, I feel like a broken record, but about the parking. Um, situation, if you had a seven hundred to a thousand square foot apartment. The chances of just one person living in it, I think, are slim to none.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so with a requirement of one car parking, like, for instance, where I live. Um, it's a triple-A zone and there's no parking on the street. So if there's not adequate parking that's provided for an accessory um, unit, then where does it park?
So, so right now, i- like, so say, yeah, you're, you're, your property, you wanted to add an accessory unit. You, you built a seven hundred square foot addition on your back of your house and it's a new, a, a new apartment and somebody's living in there. The regulations now would only require one additional legal parking. But it has to be a legal space, it has to conform to the current standards, which I think we all agree have some, need a little TLC.
What other legal needs for parking space?
What I think, who is most concerned, you don't want to have. Somebody pave over their front yard for one of these granny pods, like on some streets in Sono where. It looks pretty hideous and it's just a bunch of cars parked in front of a, probably a multifamily apartment house. And I think that's maybe what you're trying to suggest.
You know, what, what's interesting to me on the, on the parking in the front. Um, I, I understand what Mike was saying and about backing out. Um, but you know, like, we're my, I was born and raised in Greenwich and we lived on a, a street called Connecticut Avenue. And they had what they refer to as city lot, sixty by a hundred feet, and. All of the houses that are there now um, are between six and twelve thousand square feet on those lots. And they go almost from setback to setback, and all of the cars are parked in the front. And I drove down, uh, my mom passed away a few years ago, so the house is now out of the family. And um, I drove down the street to see how it was and I just couldn't believe. The across-the-street neighbor with five cars parked in front of his house. It, it's just not a good look, but I guess it's practical.
Yes.
Well, again, if, if we do approve uh, parking in the front yard setback. We would have a standard, let's say, that I've thought of as fifty percent of the front yard, subject to approval. A design subject to approval by planning and zoning staff and DPW, so that any curb cuts. Uh, where they intersect with the street would be approved as well. Uh, and we have in our neighborhood, a lot of front yard parking, which has happened de facto over the years. Uh, where, uh, oh, I won't name any staff members, but let's just say that staff over the years. Have done a wink-wink and let people park in their front yard, but when they did it. That when the staff approved it, the staff required a landscaping strip of shrubbery and plantings and trees. So that you didn't see the cars, so it wasn't just like a parking lot. And uh, even though those were not uh, uh, conforming, they were still approved over the desk uh, at. Because otherwise, they were on streets, uh, let's say Fairfield Avenue, uh, or Taylor Avenue. Uh, that are so limited in terms of parking. That the staff, I'm sure, felt like their hands were tied, they, they, you know, had a multifamily house. And so they allowed parking in the front, not always successful, but uh, if, if it is landscaped and it's only half the front yard. And it's done with pervious paving, like gravel or um, you know, bricks with gravel in between, it can be attractive. Uh, but I know exactly what you're talking about, that's, that's what we need to avoid, because I don't want to see. Parking all, you know, cars all over the front yards, it makes me crazy, actually. And unfortunately, it's, it's a zoning violation, not something you can call the police on, uh, because it's a private property issue. And uh, and so people start parking on their front, on their front lawns, it's almost impossible to stop. Uh, I, just because of the way our uh, regulatory uh, and enforcement system works. So uh, so that's why having control over and allowing it within limits, subject to approval. Is a better way than, than forcing people into just doing it with, uh, and breaking the rules. Uh, a- and uh, you know, you know, you're, you're sort of incentivizing people to do the right thing. But I'm telling you, there's houses in our neighborhood, right around the corner from me, that have no driveway. And these are multifamilies and they have no driveway at all, uh, and how do you deal with that? Uh, all the people that live in those buildings park on the street, I mean, that's something that, you know, is unusual, but it, it does happen. But certainly allowing parking in the front yard setback does uh, take the pressure off the on-street parking, uh, if it's done well.
There are lots of parts of Rowayton where people don't have driveways on Bell Island, they park on the street. There are other smaller lots in B-zones where two cars perhaps fit in the driveway, but they have a third car, they park it on the street. So if you don't live on a busy street, you can do that, but if you do live on a busy street like Fairfield Avenue, obviously you can't. But I think we want to think about all of that. Uh, impervious surface that might be put down too, in approving these things.
The, and that's why I would require the, all of this new driveway, if, if, if this is to go through. Would be required to be pervious.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, and either pervious asphalt or gravel. Uh, uh, or you know, other, there's, there are other surfaces, we have pervious sidewalks on Cedar Street. Uh, that, believe it or not, the water goes right through them like a, like a sponge. Uh, and it's uh, and yet it's a hard surface that you can shovel and. Um, it was an experiment DPW did ten years ago and they, they, for the most part, have been holding up pretty well.
Steve, have we given you uh, and the staff um, uh, enough feedback uh, for you to continue to move this forward? And bring it back to us?
Yeah, I think so, I, um, I can't say we're not gonna have more questions or more ideas that in the next week or so, but yeah, I think. Um, been a pretty good spot.
Okay, uh, any other comments on this? Okay, let's um, let's move, let's move on, um. As you know, uh, because of the incompetence of the staff.
Even though I voted to do that last.
We'll deal with that next week.
You're muted, JJ.
Sorry, I, I have a topic I'd like to bring to the table.
Sure, uh, wait, uh, can you hold it until we have comments from the commissioners? Because there is one other item, I think, that Steve's gonna talk about, the um, uh, WPCA and um. This uh, issue which s- seems to refuse to go away. About uh, whether the development that's taking place is can be accommodated by our wastewater treatment plant.
Sure, um, and before I forget, um, I've been chatting with Ralph Cobb, who runs the W, the, the treatment plant. And he has offered, if the commission would like to take a tour of the facility, we can arrange that. Um, and I already reached out to our uh, Freedom of, Freedom of, Freedom of Information Act. Uh, attorney in the office, he indicated that that would not constitute a meeting of the commission, so long as you're not discussing commission business and just. Listening in and taking, taking the tour, I took it several years ago and it's actually pretty interesting, it would, which you wouldn't expect for a wastewater treatment plant. So if anybody is interested, just shoot me an email and then I'll work with Ralph on some times and we can see if we can get you guys down there.
Good.
Um, but on that topic, so I know this has come up a lot and in any time we'd like. When we rezoned uh, the TOD areas in South Norwalk and we did West Avenue, Wall Street a few years ago. It came up again in East Norwalk and the question arises. We, you know, when, when you're adding all these new units, but you're burdening the infrastructure. Um, and the, the chief items that are usually discussed are one, um, the wastewater treatment plant. Second is our municipal water supply, whether that's from one of the taxing districts or, you know, another, another private company. And the other one that comes up is traffic, so traffic is handled separately, which we, you know, is usually done on a, you know. On an application-by-application basis when it comes through. But um, so we had talked to both, uh, you know, WPCA and. The uh, water companies at, you know, during all these processes, like, you know, we're, we're getting these questions that are good questions about. Uh, you know, wh- what is the status of the treatment plant and can they handle the, you know, what's happening development-wise? Um, I don't know if I've got my notes in front of me to look at, but in essence, the, the current capacity. Um, of the plant is more than adequate to handle what's um, on the books now and what's been approved. I think when they looked at this a couple of years ago, this is sometime in twenty twenty. They indicated, you know, they could handle an additional eighty-five hundred units of housing um, in the city at that time. And that had already factored in certain projects that we're still discussing right now, so. The, you know, and while Norwalk's been growing, we haven't come close to adding eighty-five hundred units over the last few years. Um, WPCA is right now in the process of analyzing their capacity in the system and they're. Um, they're bringing a, a consultant to handle that and they will be reaching out to a P&amp;Z staff, perhaps a commission as well, to look at. You know, the future needs of the facility and, and where that stands for now, but for that issue specifically, that I think in. I, I, I think, and I'm gonna paraphrase the numbers and I'll double-check at another point just to confirm. I think that the, the limit of their licensing is about eighteen million gallons per day. And I'll, I should double-check that and I think that their current um, rolling average is about twelve point four. So they're really pretty far below um, of the, the, the threshold, so that, that issue does come up. The other one that comes up a lot is, you know, water capacity and it was, the first came up a, a few years ago, there was that pretty significant drought we had. It might have been three years ago and water capacity and, you know, all the new development is taking away water capacity, but. When you actually talk to the water providers, the, the actual, the opposite is happening there. The issue is that they've been going through significant upgrades to their infrastructure. And anytime some of these new projects come in, they require those applicants to uh, replace and fix that infrastructure. So their actual water usage is actually decreasing. And their forecast, which they have to provide to the state of Connecticut, um, it, it's not something the city requires, it's a state requirement. Their forecasts going forward are actually less and less, just basically based on efficiency alone of. The different uh, fixtures that are put in and replacement of the existing infrastructure. And I know it's kind of counterintuitive to what we see going on, but it's just the, 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 those are the numbers and those are the numbers that they provide us. That's kind of the backup and the, you know, the, the backup that we use when we, you know, propose something. We want to make sure, obviously, that we're not taxing the infrastructure and based on everything we've seen and the forecast that we put together when we've done the more recent rezonings. We're not getting close to taxing the system, but based on the, you know, the kind of the output that we're seeing. That's kind of it in a nutshell.
I just wanted to make one comment, one quick comment. Um, I agree with what you just said, in the five years, I think that, that I've been sitting here. Um, I've heard that from the WPCA and I've heard that from the water providers. I've also heard from statistically from the, the owners of the various projects that we have approved. How many um, kids are added to the school system? Because that's always also been uh, a question that has been raised a number of times. And the question that I have asked a number of times that has come up is the difference in the tax assessment role. For let's say, uh, the pinnacle project, for example, um, on West Avenue. What's, what's the difference in the assessment, what's the difference in the tax collection on those projects between? Uh, what was there before and what's there now? And that's the only question um, that's been raised by the public and by me that I haven't heard an answer to. I mean, I think I know what the answer is, but it would really be great to hear from the assessor's office as to. Um, you know, what's, what's transpired with these, with the tax rolls in those projects.
Well, um, we did some analysis of, of some impacts a couple of years ago. I'll see if we got to that um, level for those projects. And some of those, you know, there are enter, enterprise zone benefits for some of these properties that affect that initial um. Tax collection versus later years, I know if you saw the article in the paper about the um, third-phase development on Chestnut Street. That's just about to, should be coming in front of you guys in, in the next few months, that I think there was the. That I think there was, the tax abatement was built into that, um, analysis. And like, you know, it, it starts off lower, but then after the seventh or eighth year, I think it's up significantly.
If I understand how that works correctly, there, there's, the, the property is assessed. It's just that the taxes are abated on a percentage basis for a certain year. So, um, for instance, on Chestnut Street, which I have to, um, recuse myself from every time, the only building of any worth that was there was the 11 Chestnut Street factory building, um, which wasn't worth anything basically until it was renovated. Um, so the taxes that are attributable to the, um, one Chestnut Street or the assessment, I should say, attributable to the one Chestnut Street project has got to be huge compared to what was there before, I would imagine.
Yeah, and, and I can, um, I'll, I'll do a little more digging on those numbers and see if I can get a good example. And I did put some memos together a couple of years ago, and I think it was specific to the West Ave Wall Street where we, you know, we, we talked to, um, we talked to the police department, we talked to the fire department and, you know, we said, what, you know, looked at manpower going back a few years going forward and try to get an, a, a, an understanding from them was, are you seeing, uh, increased call load based on what's happening with the developments as well? And it didn't, didn't pan out to anything significant, because that, that goes into the broader picture of what are the impacts of these developments? And is it real, actually taxing the infrastructure? And what, what's the facts?
Well, and also you might want to keep in mind, if we added 8,500 new units, what would it do to Norwalk Hospital and the emergency room if, you know, so many people needed to go there at once? I don't know if we keep those things in mind either.
Not, I don't know if we asked them that. And again, that, that 8,500 is, you know, by the time we realize that and that gets built into the system, that could be over a decade out for sure.
Right. But if they never increase the capacity of any of these things, then I, I'm, I'm just asking the question. I don't have any crystal ball.
Norwalk Hospital's adding a $20 million wing.
I did see that, yeah. So maybe you're anticipating all of this.
I don't, I wouldn't worry about that. I think that's likely to, to keep up with the demand.
Well, you never know. I mean, that's a donation, right? Those, the Bowers weren't so generous, our hospital wouldn't have that. That's a very unusual thing. And I'm sure 20 million doesn't buy you what it used to. I don't know if it's bed capacity or what. But anyway, it's just something to keep in mind if we're chunking in all this new development, how it does stress the infrastructure.
And.
The answer, the answer seems to be, uh, at least what we know about is that it doesn't, it isn't stressing the infrastructure.
Exactly.
Well, and I'd like to.
To be honest, I'm very skeptical.
Yeah, I, I'd like to add that the census data that just came from 2020, uh, you know, was, been, been released over the last couple of years. But, uh, Norwalk grew 6% over the last decade with all the new development, uh, which is a historic low. Uh, we generally grew at 20 to 30%, sometimes 40 and 50% over decades in the, uh, 20th century and then that, well, not going back to 19th century, but the 20th century. The 1930s, 1940s, 1950s, every decade, Norwalk basically doubled every 10 years. Uh, and it, it was, and it was, used to be farms all over Norwalk and they all got, uh, developed into sprawl. And I, and I find it interesting that, uh, had a, had, since we're growing at a very slow pace, visibly it looks like we're growing so fast because people are, we're building apartment buildings. But if you look at what, at the growth rates, we're actually not growing very fast historically. And so, and we're keeping up with population growth, but we're not, we're not, uh, by any definition overbuilding based on population growth and other trends and compared to other cities. So a 6% growth rate over the last decade is, is not, uh, is not huge. But I've heard people say, oh, we're just, oh, you know, we're building so much, but you, you know, we're concentrating building nearest transit uh, and where it makes sense, uh, in, in areas where the infrastructure can support it. Uh, and I just think of all the, you know, a lot of people who don't like the development are living in sprawled suburban. I find them pretty ugly houses that are sprawled across Norwalk, if I can be so bold. Uh, and, uh, and, and really, uh, criticizing development and the building of housing from a position, uh, living in a house that used to be farmland. And I'm always struck by that irony of, of, you know, Norwalk was really all of our open space was gobbled up by suburban development, uh, and you could just drive around and see it uh, in, in, over the last 50 years. And, uh, and now we're correcting that. We're, we're correcting, we're, we're, that's why I don't mind keeping triple A the way it is, because I don't want more sprawl. I want housing to be near where in walkable communities where people want to live. And it, it makes a lot more sense to me. Anyway.
One thing I was going to say is that, you know, the, I think, even though we grew six and a half percent, we were still below the national average. So I, I don't, I don't find the six and a half in a one sense sounds big, but compared to the rest of the state in many ways it is, because Connecticut was either slow or declining in many areas. You know, prior to pandemic, but we were still below the national.
And, and I'd also add one thing about the water usage. I also have heard criticism about apartments using water from people who live, again, in suburban houses. And I'll tell you, I do know for a fact that in May, the water usage increases 40% uh, in Norwalk from the water companies, and I know this very accurately, uh, because people turn on their sprinkler systems. And so it's the suburban houses that are using 40% of our water to water their lawns and gardens. And I'm guilty of that. I have a sprinkler system and I'm going to turn it on next week. But let's keep that in mind. For people who are criticizing, uh, you know, the building of housing and using water, while they are using more water to water their gardens than any apartment building ever would, I just, I just find that, again, ironic. Uh, so I'd like to keep perspective on this. You need to hear where criticism is coming from and you need to hear why people might fear apartments and new faces. Uh, leave it at that.
Thank you very much, Mike, for making that important case.
Any, any more on the, uh, this question of infrastructure? If, if not, we'll, we'll move forward. Steve, do you have any, uh, further comments?
So, so if, like I said, if you want to tour WPCA, just shoot me an email and I will set that up.
Thank you. Um, okay, comments, uh, of commissioners, JJ?
Yes, um, I, I'd like to, um, um, ask a question for Steve. Is it possible to extend the moratorium um, for contractor yards in order to give our neighbors more time to review and engage in these rules?
Yes, so, so the, the proposals to extend it through September, and I actually uh, spent a couple of hours this afternoon with Darlene Young and Diane Revolus touring South Norwalk, talking about some of the issues that, um, were discussed at the EDC. There, I, I didn't know I ended up having to drive and I was not, you didn't want to sit in my trunk, that, we were maxed out in my car. So I offered also to Darlene, if, um, she would like me to come talk to District B. I know she said there was a meeting coming up not too far away, that I would come and chat about this issue there. I think from the issue with the contractor yards, that's not quite resolved based on the conversation at the ECD meeting was a small area, you know, it was really around South Main Chestnut Street was the area that was the kind of, what do we do there? So I think that was the one they wanted to chat more about.
So you will be at the next District B meeting on, in June?
If they invite me, I will be there.
Uh, you are invited.
So if you have a date, I'm happy to put it on the.
Okay, I'll put it out there. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Comments, uh, from any of the other commissioners?
Yeah, I have a comment. Uh, we need to get started on redoing our, the, um,
Bylaws?
Bylaws. And so I want to try to meet with, I think the committee is me and Mike and, uh, Darius. And we should try to plan to get together and discuss it. I was going to try to put together a rough draft, you know, put the two, by, sets of bylaws together. The trouble is, I am the staple queen and it would all have to be retyped, which is kind of a burden to do. Does anyone have any software that can, can convert a, you know, like a.
We have them in Word.
You have it in Word?
Yeah.
Oh, well, please send it to me in Word. That'd be great.
Next, Galen, uh, Steve is also a member of, uh, of the committee. So ma- make sure he's noticed about the meeting.
Okay, sure.
All right, thank you.
I thought we, if we start out with a draft that we're working from, it'll go more quickly.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
I don't want to start writing them from scratch. That's for sure.
I'll send out word versions of both of those to the three of you guys tomorrow, so you have it.
Well, thank you so much. That'd be very, very helpful.
Okay.
Well, I guess we'll be in touch. Uh, I'll send you guys, all three of you guys. So email proposals for, you know, where and when. I guess since Steve is on the committee, we should probably meet in the zoning office.
Yeah, that's fine. That works.
Or we can meet on my deck. In which case I could, you know, we could have a glass of wine or something, have sort of a more civilized meeting. But we'll see.
All right. Uh, anything else from any of the other commissioners? Uh, if not, I'll, um, I'll just remind you, we have, uh, an upcoming meeting next Wednesday, uh, the 18th, it's in, it, it's chock a block with material. Uh, Steve, it'd be helpful if you can get out, uh, materials to us, uh, as soon as possible. Um, so we have an opportunity to review them before the meeting. Um, and I, I look forward to seeing everybody next Wednesday. Um, I need a motion to, uh, yep, I'm sorry. Okay, motion from Brian to adjourn. Uh, Galen had her hand up, uh, second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right.
Have a good week.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you, Lou.
All right.
Bye. Thank you.